Good morning and welcome to the county commission meeting. I'd ask you to stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning again. This is March 15, 2022, and I would remind you to silence your cellphones. If you need a listening device, Craig in the front row can help you with that. And if you have not signed in for public comment or for item number 11, if you would please put your name and address on our sheet over there. It just helps our recorder get spellings correct. With that, I would look for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved, second.
Have a motion as second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Now the consent agenda. I would look for a motion to approve consent agenda.
So move, Benega.
Second.
I have a motion as second. A roll call vote, please.
Benega.
Aye.
Barth. Karski.
Aye.
Hi, Digger.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Now we'll have opportunity for public comment. If there's anyone that would like to speak on a subject that is not on today's agenda, this would be your opportunity. And you could just give your name. You don't have to give your address today.
My name is Teresa Pesh, and my public comment today is in regards to security of ballot, election ballot boxes for the 2022 election.
Pull the microphone. Yeah, the microphone towards you.
And I know this isn't a time for questions, but I'm going to ask a rhetorical question. On our proposed policies and election candidates deserving of honest and secure election processes. That brings me to an open request, open records request that I submitted to our county's auditor office this past February 11th. As per response timeframe, as stated in South Dakota code law 1-27-37, I received an email response by, or on, February 22nd. I asked five questions regarding the ballot boxes of the 2020 election cycle. And please keep in mind, is the reason I asked these particular questions was to share with the legal voters of Minnehaha County the information and to promote, if not already, a more secure election process for the upcoming 2022 election. So out of the five questions, I'm just going to say the two questions that I asked. The second question was, and this is an email response by the auditor office. And so my two out of five questions was who monitored/reviewed video, which is the camera surveillance, ongoing or on a daily basis of the ballot boxes? So that's my second question. And in quotes, the response was, no records exist which reflect who monitored/reviewed the video, unquote. The last sentence of the paragraph is, quote, "Both were video 24/7 through the Minnehaha County Surveillance System." I didn't know what the Surveillance System meant until I looked at my question number three, which was, were the videos archived and their location? So the camera videos for the ballot boxes, that answer was, the archived video surveillance, end quote. The video was not archived, therefore no record exists. The video was preserved and thereafter deleted in accordance with the Minnehaha County IT Department's retention practice for security videos, unquote. And with that, I refer to a federal law from 2015 U.S. Code Title 52 regarding voting and elections, subtitle 2, chapter 207, from the federal election records. And in section 20701, is retention includes retention and preservation of 22 months of records and papers by officers of elections. So my point for bringing this up isn't to pinpoint any particular person or any particular office, even though the auditor, it seems like the auditor office in South Dakota, they have a lot of responsibility and election process being one of them. And the reason I bring up the open request answers and I bring up the law is not to pinpoint any particular person, but is just to make the office that's in charge and the people that are in charge of the auditor's office more accountable. As a society, we all have service that we provide to other people. That's just part of how our societies run. And so I'm proposing is that for the 2022 election process, that our elections are more secure. So I still have a little bit more time. Ballot boxes are permitted in South Dakota. Minnehaha plans to have two ballot boxes for our 2022 elections. These receptacles, when asked by the average person if they prefer convenience, because the receptacles are convenient, or do they prefer secure election practices? More than 95% of those people said they're more concerned about secure elections to know that their vote counted versus a vote being convenient to drop off. So thank you for your time and this consideration.
Thank you, Teresa. Anybody else that public comment? Good morning, Cindy.
Good morning. It's bad when you can call me by name.
Yeah.
I am speaking, I am Cindy Meyer, speaking on again. Election integrity issues. A couple of weeks ago, Commissioner Barth stood up and said, "We are at war." He was absolutely right. We are at war. I'm not convinced that the conflict between Russia and the Ukraine is the war, since they have been in conflict for already eight years. But we are at war, but it's an information war. Mainstream media wants you to believe there is a war with Russia and the Ukraine to get your attention off from the theft of the 2020 election. In many states, fraud has been shown, whether from stuffing ballot boxes, voting equipment being connected to the internet, breaking chain of custody documents, and the list goes on and on. Our group, South Dakota Canvassing, has become very involved in working towards election integrity with free and fair elections. In support of what we are about and what numerous other states are about, Dr. Douglas Frank has been traveling the U.S. by request from groups in the different states to show the people what he, what he has found as it relates to the 2020 election. From his analysis, he can show there was election irregularities in all 50 states, and that includes South Dakota. Dr. Douglas Frank is a 40-year modeler of pandemics and elections, a renewed scientist and inventor who received his PhD in electrochemistry at UC Santa Barbara. He has authored approximately 60 peer-reviewed scientific reports, including feature and cover articles in the leading scientific journals in the world. Dr. Frank built upon Kurt Hyde's theory from the 2010 that suggested the U.S. census data could be used to artificially inflate voter registration databases across the country. He further asserted that voter registration databases were indeed inflated during the 2020 election, and that using an algorithm that he theorized was developed at the state level and applied it to voter registration information in each individual county in a state. The voter turnout of the election was predictable to an unusually high level of accuracy. Dr. Frank has purchased the voter rolls from the state of South Dakota, and he has applied his methods to the information for South Dakota as well on a per-county basis. Dr. Frank is coming to Sioux Falls on Monday, March 21st. We are doing an event, and I'll pass a few of these around. He's going to be here, like I said, March 21st. The program begins at 7:30 at night. The location for the venue is the Thunder Road Entertainment Center. It's on 201 North Kiwanis Avenue. And he is coming here as a favor to our group and to present the information for the state of South Dakota. So just wanted to stand up here and say that we are having this event. I hope that you can attend. And I have a few pamphlets I will hand out because I didn't have everybody's cellphone number, but...
If you put them on the end, Commissioner Karski could pass them down.
Okay. And, yeah, and I was, I actually, you know, texted to you guys.
Okay.
So I'm just going to hand out a couple here.
Thank you.
Because I don't have your email address.
Yep, and I have it. I have it. Yep, I have it. Thanks, Cindy. Is there anyone else who would like to speak for public comment? Okay. With that, we'll move on to our regular business. Item number 10 is consider a motion to issue a proclamation declaring March 19, 2022 as St. Patrick's Day in Minnehaha County. Good morning, Sean. That's you.
Good morning, county commissioners. How are you?
Great. Do you, go ahead.
No, you go ahead.
I was going to say, do you have a copy that you can read it to us?
I do not.
I'm going to give you a copy if you'll come and get it. And I'm going to let you just explain what it is and then read the proclamation to us.
Very good. So obviously, Thursday is actually the best holy holiday there is in the world on St. Patrick's Day. But we're going to have the parade in downtown Sioux Falls on Saturday, the 19th, Saturday afternoon, with our parade committee. And I'm current chair of the parade committee with the Chamber of Commerce staff. So, and we certainly appreciate the support of County Ominihaha. Whereas we be Irishmen and women all this day of national celebration at home in Ireland and in homewins throughout the world, and whereas the joyous unity of St. Patrick's Day reminds us of all shared heritage and membership in a global family, and whereas today we honor the patron saint of Ireland, of his great message of love and peace to one another, and whereas celebrations are in order for an expression of culture and heritage in music, dance, poetry, games, and just a wee bit of green beer raised in a toast. And whereas green silliness abounds as you shed your troubles by the road for a chance of good cheer and a wearin' of the green, and in this we proclaim, as leprechauns are a-dancin', and the joy that's everywhere, with luck as your companion, from deep in our hearts we treasure our strong community spirit and tradition of welcome and care for one another. And thank God for the Irish who gave us St. Pat to bring us together, a-wearin' the green hat, then shout a-proclaim, for the whole world is Irish on the 19th day of O-March, dated this 15th day of the merry month of March, 2022, signed by the Minnehaha County Commissioners.
Thank you, Sean.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your support. And I would welcome any, either one of, any of the commissioners to come Saturday morning to read the proclamation at our painting of the Shamrock, 11:00 a.m. at the Carpenter Hotel hallway, right in front of Mrs. Murphy's.
Okay. Are there any questions for Sean? I would look for a motion to approve the proclamation.
Oh, moved. Oh, second.
Second. I have a motion and an oh, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Sean.
Thank you very much.
Yes, Commissioner.
Going to slap that green paint on the street for us.
We better figure that out.
Okay.
Okay. That sounds like a plan. Thanks, Sean.
Very good. Looking forward to seeing someone.
You'd bring that up again, maybe after old business or whatever, so we can discuss that. Item number 11 is consideration of communication to the South Dakota Public Utilities Commission concerning the proposed Summit Carbon Solutions Pipeline. Tyler.
Good morning, Tyler, Commission Office. Summit Carbon Solutions submitted an application to the South Dakota PUC on February 7, 2022. That application is for a carbon dioxide transmission pipeline. A draft letter has been drafted, draft letter has been prepared to submit to the PUC expressing the position of the Minnehaha County Commission. Some consideration, as you look at this draft, should be given to the concerns expressed by the community related to the pipeline. I've also included a map of the proposed route, which was created by county GIS staff. And I want to thank Heidi and Scott for putting that together because it's, it's a little better than the one I drew. So with that, I'll leave it to the commission for any discussion.
Okay. Thanks, Tyler. So there are a lot of people here that want to speak. Can I ask, as a show of hands first, how many people? Wonderful. One, two, three, four, five. And I just ask that you don't repeat information and that you give your name. You don't need to give your address, as long as you signed in on the paper at the door. And I'd appreciate if you would, because we need it for public record. And we will listen to your comments, and then the commission will bring it back to us. So whoever wants to go first, if you just identify yourself and give us your comments.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Rick Bonender. I'm the landowner over at Valley Springs, where the proposed alternate pipeline for Summit is coming through, as well as the main line for Navigator. And we want to thank the commissioners and the chair for allowing us to give, allow, give us our concerns today. And with the Navigator pipeline crossing, we're looking at, it's crossing the most populated county in the state, which is Minnehaha County. And the reason that we're opposed to this pipeline, whether it be Navigator or whether it be Summit, is that because the business model is predicated on capturing federal carbon credits. So that's to the tune of over 12 years of $9 billion. So remember that when you pay your income taxes, that people like BlackRock, PG&E, and Valero are collecting these type of monies over a 12-year period. The second thing that we are concerned about is eminent domain, and using eminent domain for private gain, we don't think it's quite fair that you can be able to take land that people have worked for, for generations to earn, and take it over eminent domain for private gain for these millionaires wanting to be billionaires. The last point that we're concerned about is safety and liability issues. The federal guidelines require that the pipeline be buried a minimum of three feet deep and placed no closer to a residence, a business, a church, or where people meet of 50 feet. State of South Dakota will be using these pipelines, guidelines, and they're totally The second thing that we need to know about this is there is no insurance coverage for the landowner or the renter. The landowner is 100% responsible should one of these pipelines, not when they leak, it's when and where they leak. We don't believe that is, that's, that's fair. We have some remedies for this, for this, these pipelines, since it's the most populated county in the state, and that both companies will tell you that we're not going through populated areas, but in this case, they are. We would ask that the county commission ask both companies to redirect the pipeline around the county. Also, we believe that the county should establish some standards for hazardous pipelines. The pipeline needs to be, for a hazardous materials pipeline, be buried six feet deep from the top of the pipe. The pipe needs to be placed a quarter of a mile away from homes, businesses, church, or places where people meet. Also, we want to require the pipeline companies for hazardous materials to have a bond, so when they go bankrupt or when they close operations, those pipelines are removed. Also, we need to have training for our emergency personnel, so when these pipelines leak, there's annual training for them as to how to respond, as well as providing the equipment for these, these heroes in our community. We believe these are fair, they're not easy requirements, but then neither having a hazardous material pipeline running through our community is beneficial. I believe it has an effect on the tax base of the county and would ask for your help and support with our concerns of our group. We have a number of our group here. I'd ask them to stand to show support. We want to thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Thanks, Rick. Want to go on to the next? Is there any questions for Rick before he sits down, or you want to hear all the testimony first, then we can come back? We'll hear all the testimony first. Anybody else that would like to speak at this point?
My name is Don Johnson. I'm of the Valley Springs Fire Chief. And I guess my main concern is the simple fact, I've gone and looked, there is absolutely no training out there available to deal with this problem. The thing you have to remember, they've done some studies in England where they blew one of these pipelines. It covers a very large area very fast. So if this thing blows, there's one thing you can do. Get in your car and run like hell, because there's nothing I can do to stop it. We would have to have hundreds of SCBA's on hand, ready for these people to use. There's nothing we can do for cattle. They would just die. Because this stuff is heavier than air, so it's going to stay on the ground. It's going to follow the creek lines and stuff like that, and that's going to lead to Brandon, Sioux Falls, south to Canton, down to Larchwood. So I mean, it's, this, this thing's not good. I see absolutely no need for it, and I don't think they should be able to even think about putting it in until they can figure out how to contain it and take care of it if it does leak. And all pipelines leak eventually. That's all there is to it. Thank you.
Thanks, Don. Next person.
She wants to use the elbow.
Good morning. Peggy Hoogastrot. I thank you, commissioners, for allowing me an opportunity to comment this morning. I was contacted by Summit that they would be crossing my property with this carbon dioxide pipeline, and I denied them permission to cross the property, even to do a survey. And the reason is Dakota Access Pipeline also crosses that same property. And when construction started on that pipeline in 2016, it was a nightmare. And I have a picture here of pipes that were installed for the oil pipeline. There were marks all over the pipes, and it appeared there were repairs done before they even put the pipes in the, in the ground, and that concerned me. And remember, I said construction started in 2016? 2020, there already was a leak on my property. This is in Humboldt Township. There are four homes around that leak, near that leak, and there's also a development to the east of that area. That is an oil leak. That is not the carbon dioxide leak, which would be devastating for anybody in Minnehaha County. And I want to tell you, at that time, I kept asking the fire chief of Hartford, if they had training, if there's a leak, will you know what to do? And as long as he was fire chief, this is Mr. Shoemaker, as long as he was fire chief at the Hartford Fire and Rescue, he said they never received any training for any leak that may occur, even though it was supposed to be required by Dakota Access. So why aren't, why aren't there even more people here today being concerned? Some of them don't know that the line is going to cross their property, or they don't know they're a neighbor. And the process of permitting a pipeline is very complicated, and until you've gone through it, you have no idea what is involved, and I, I can say that for sure. And Summit, whether intentional or not, has provided so many different maps. At this time, as a landowner, I don't even know for sure where the pipeline is going to be going, past my property or my area. And to be honest with you, I don't even know if you have the right map. So be aware of that. You may not even have the correct information. There are few landowners that trust that Summit will follow the PUC conditions, because Dakota Access did not follow conditions, even though they are required to. And we could have a roomful of landowners to testify to that. So I encourage you to keep following the information that shows up on the PUC site, but I ask that you be very considerate and read the public comments that are on the PUC site, because there are people across the state that have concerns, whether it's because of an earthquake or going past a home. I just want you to know Summit has not been honest and transparent with landowners. So I ask that you be very vigilant in your research, and I really thank you for your honesty and your concern. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Peggy. Next person? Do you have another one that wants to speak?
Good morning. My name is Joy Hohn, and I agree with everything Peggy Hoogastrot just presented to you. We are landowners with the Dakota Access Pipeline that has crossed, and the conditions that were set forth by the PUC were not followed. When they finished with our pipeline, or installing the pipeline, we wanted nothing to do with Dakota Access after that. They're just, they, they have underhanded dealings. They treat people, you know, poorly, and we just, when they left, we wanted nothing to do with them, so we have not contacted them since with problems on our land. And every year before we plant, we have lots of rocks to pick, so if any of you would like to come and help pick rocks, you sure can. And our crop production has not returned, and this is six years. They give you a three-year, in, in the easements, they give you a three-year compensation package. So I just feel like these pipelines come in underhandedly, under the radar. They try to get people before they're even aware or know what's to do, or even how to fight these companies. So that is why we are asking you, commissioners, to please stand up for us, because the PUC will listen to you. They will listen to your voice. You have a stronger voice than us landowners. And, you know, we just feel helpless against these multimillion-dollar companies. It's ridiculous, really. Like you said, you work your whole life for this land, and then you, would they come in and with their easements, you have, you know, you can't even do what you want to do with the land. So it's, it's awful. And I would like to add to Rick's comments. Also, I know that in Iowa, a lot of people were questioning Summit when they came to do their presentations, if they would commit to providing oxygen cylinders and self-contained breathing apparatuses to every resident and school child along the route. And they would not comment. They kept on avoiding that question. This is such a hazardous pipeline, and, you know, I'm concerned. I'm concerned for our safety, for the safety of the citizens of South Dakota. This is a not necessary pipeline, and it's only to put money in Summit's pockets.
Thanks, Joy. Mr. Meyer.
My name is Gary Meyer. I live in Minnehaha County. I was not planning to speak, but I will sign in in a bit. As a landowner, I would like to say that when a pipeline goes across the land, it renders that land useless for the rest of the pipeline's life or any kind of development. You cannot develop or dig over the top of that pipeline, and they also have a certain number of feet right of way that they have over that pipeline. So the three-year compensation, that should be a lifetime compensation for the life of that pipeline, because if you ever try and sell that land, or you want to put up a shed or sell it for a house, you can't do that. And I would like to say I concur with the rest of the comments that were made. Thank you.
Thanks, Gary. Other comment? I think we had a couple more hands. Yep.
I did not sign in, so I will do that as well. My name is Shuva Johnson. I'm completely new to this process. I'm also a new resident in Minnehaha County. I live in rural Garrettson. My father and my family farm there. And I, actually, everything that I was planning to say has already been said, but I will also add that along with the concerns of not being able to further develop, say, for a house for my own family, if this, the current route goes very near to our land, it doesn't currently cross, but it's within hundreds of feet where it actually starts leaving the southern area of our land. But we've been told that the, you know, the current map, the current path, is not a given at this point. It could be based on people complaining and having issues, and, you know, if they continue to have problems with easements and everything, it could shift even just incrementally. Nobody knows in our area where it's actually going to go. So it affects far more people than you see here, or that will even know that they might be affected, because we're not going to know far down the line, you know? This is the Navigator Pipeline, but even now for Summit, they haven't, as far as I understand, have not finalized even the Summit for sure as to the final path. So we're looking at years of not knowing, and... So we're looking at years of not knowing and being unsure for ourselves, our children, everything. So, and I'm a new, I'm within six months of having moved here, and, but I'm from here originally, and this is extremely concerning. So, thank you.
Thanks, Shuva. I think we might have had at least one more hand. Yes, no? Last call? Okay, you got one in the back row.
I am Kate Brick, and I did not raise my hand to start with, but just a few points that I would like to bring forward. One is, there's really no need for carbon sequestration, and this poses a lot of danger for something that is not necessary. There are other ways you can deal with carbon dioxide. It's actually a natural resource that we can use to make things like dry ice, like Poet does. A second thing is if these lines are abandoned, which every say they never will be, or perhaps the government programs don't support the carbon dioxide credits anymore, then we end up having an abandoned pipeline that these companies have the right to sell to anyone they want to, which would include foreign countries. So that's something that's pretty important to know. Another thing that struck me as odd, I've been in the contracting industry, and we used to have the 811 meetings once a year where all the contractors would come in, and we would be told that we need to be safe and make sure we call and have our lines located. And we actually had the head of the Homeland Security speak to us one year. And one of the contractors mentioned that he doesn't know why they've got to always locate these lines. If they just post all these maps online, they could figure out where the lines were themselves, and they could just do self-marking, and everything would be fine. And his response to that was, "We really can't have these maps online and available to everyone as this one is right now. It's highly dangerous because of terrorism." So we've already given them a map to, you know, a one-shot bomb situation. And then the last thing that I really think is neglectful on this is we do have landowners here, but even if you had every single landlord and their whole family here, we don't have a substantial number of votes. They represent a lot of land and not a lot of voting power. And when this information has been sent out that they are proposing this pipeline, it's a super limited number of people who know that. Thank you.
Thanks, Kate. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? Did you want to speak? Jessica? Hi. Perfect timing, huh?
I just wanted to say that we're, my family is really worried about how close these pipelines come to our house, if there was a leak or something. It's a silent killer. We wouldn't know, like, if anything was wrong before, you know, we were passed out and couldn't save ourselves. So we're just really worried about how close the pipeline comes to our property. So we were hoping that some sanctions could be put in to, you know, make it further away from properties, hopefully.
Those are some of the things that Rick mentioned a little bit ago.
Oh, okay.
Yep, he did. Jessica, could you give us your last name?
Deering, D-E-E-R-I-N-G.
And if before, I'll let you finish, and I'll have a comment.
Oh, go ahead.
Just when you leave that you'd sign in. You came a little late to our party, so he would just sign in, and that's fine. We're glad you made it in time.
Yeah, that's my main concern, is our health, my family's health, my animals' health, my health. Yeah, so I just wanted to make that known and hopefully get some restrictions to how close that pipeline can come.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jessica. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Orin Guidy, 46134, 263rd Street at Hartford. 2016, you kind of gave permission for Dakota Access to run a pipeline. Well, they went through a whole section of my property then, and I'm really not enthused about having my property be a pipeline highway. And if you guys, Commissioners, kind of approve this pipeline, that kind of gives incentive for the PUC to go ahead with eminent domain, grant Summit that privilege. And, I don't know, I just don't like somebody telling me what they can do with my ground, so. And I run a lot of livestock out there. I've got three wells on that section, and I got buffalo that run that whole mile. So I just assumed they didn't have the pipeline at all. So that's my comment.
And just clarification, we actually don't get a vote on this.
Yes, I know.
Okay. It goes to the PUC.
But you can grant, you know, whether you're kind of on board with it or not. I think the PUC kind of looks at that. If we can get you to kind of get on board with the Iowa Commissioners that kind of went against that pipeline, that'd be a little bit of a better step for us to kind of stop it.
Thanks.
I don't know. I don't know all the politics, but we'll go from there.
Okay, thanks, Orin. Anyone else? Okay, I don't think there's anyone else in the other room. Is there, Carol? Okay, nobody in the other room. So I will bring it back to the Commission for comments, questions, direction, and if you want to ask a question of the audience, we'll pull them back up again. So, comments, questions? Everybody's thinking.
Madam Chair, I know that it's unusual, but I have stuff to say about this.
Notes.
You know, I'm very much opposed to this. There is no benefit to our citizens. It's a boondoggle to enrich a private party. It's going to damage the land permanently. It's going to endanger our citizens. There's no insurance, no training, no training, there are no shut-off valves. And when the company goes bankrupt after transferring all their debts to some, you know, subsidiary, stuff is still going to be in the ground. And as it's been said, and by the way, I'd love to pick rocks. I need the work. The, I did it as a kid. I'm not sure I can bend over more than two or three times in a row. But, anyway, we need to do what we can to blunt their effort to get this accomplished. There ought to be more shut-off valves. It ought to be buried deeper. There should be a bond set aside to remove the pipelines when they're done. And there probably needs to be an annual payment for having this across your property. Who does this benefit? Not anyone in this room. Who does this protect? Not anyone in this room. It's the wrong product at this time. I know that Iceland has a program to do similar, and they're pumping a few thousand tons of this into the volcanic rock in Iceland. Why can't they pump this stuff into Iowa? Why can't they pump it into Nebraska? Why isn't Poet wanting to be part of this? This whole thing is bad, and I support all of these folks that are coming here to oppose it. I stand with you on this.
Well, I'm not going to follow that with a long speech, because I don't want to pick rocks either.
Send the little ones.
After four back surgeries, I think I had enough of those. I would just say that this Commission, as far as I'm concerned, has always been strongly supportive of health and safety of everybody in the county, and that goes for police officers, sheriff's officers, the training that we do for volunteer firefighters. Everything that we have tried to do is a primary reason why we support health and safety and why our budget continues to grow. So we support what's been said today. I agree with the concerns and the risk of what's going to happen. Frankly, nobody has any idea what the possibilities are in the future, and as it's been said, there is no significant benefit, that I realize, from what we see here. And I think what we've seen in the past from other companies, it doesn't give us any more comfort, to be honest. So I strongly recommend that we let the PUC know that, not only that we as a county Commission, but the citizens that we've heard from, do not support that application or proposal.
Commissioner Kersky.
I have picked rock. A lot of fresh air and sunshine, but not a lot of fun. Yeah. Approval of a pipeline is way above the pay grade of any of us as county commissioners. That's why we have the PUC. But like my fellow Commissioners, I do share in their concerns, the concerns that you have about safety, the welfare, and just in general, all the concerns that have been presented about liability and who's responsible for what. And those are the concerns that we need to address if this is going to be approved. You know, that we want to make sure that, as a county, we're protected, especially the citizens and the property owners that this pipeline could go through. Yeah, we've seen messes before, and we just want to make sure it's ironclad and solid. And the PUC has their attorneys, and they spend months analyzing every period and comma in the agreement that's made. And we just want to make sure that our concerns are heard, and that the concerns are that safety and welfare of our citizens are paramount. So if it has to happen, we need the protection.
So now it's my turn. This last week, I was on vacation to spend it with my brother, who is a chemist, retired chemist. And so I just hypothetically asked him questions about carbon monoxide and stuff, and so carbon dioxide. I found out a lot of information, which a lot of it has been shared in this meeting and stuff. And so, you know, he wasn't talking pipelines, he was just talking properties of the gas. And I found it very interesting, and it's been supported, obviously, well, he's a scientist. You guys are not, but it's been supported by the comments that you have made, too. And I agree, we're more concerned about our citizens here than we are about somebody else making a huge profit off of something that doesn't benefit anyone in this county. So.
I'm sorry. I also wanted to point out.
You'll have to come to the microphone. And yes, you have to have permission, but I will give you permission, but you have to come to the microphone. Just a second.
Since I am so new to moving back to the state, I've been, I've gone 20 years, but my, I'm from here, my dad's been here his whole life. At the meeting in Valley Springs was mentioned McPherson County up north, and so I just looked it up this morning before coming. And it's only a population of a little over 2,000 people, and they've done amazing organization up there and have put in a moratorium for making sure that there's research done for the health of the land, the people there. And for crying out loud, if this county, you know, the size that we are, if we cannot put up at least as much of a stink and support and do the research, and as what little McPherson County up north can do, I mean, I just, I wanted to put that out there.
Thank you. So, Commission, back to you. I mean, we can look into what they did in McPherson County at a later date, not today. But I want to know what your direction is as far as we're going to direct our staff to continue, or to, you know, tweak our, to whom it may concern. We obviously have to work with our attorney on making sure we have the right verbiage and stuff. We will be attaching all information that we've gotten from your group to this letter to send to the PUC. Am I missing anything else? Is there something you want as a specific comment to go into this letter? Do you want me to, do you want it changed? Do you, so, just looking for your direction, or if we want to go back, if we want to go with what we have written so far, or change?
Madam Chair, thank you. I would wish it to be a stronger, a stronger letter, and, you know, we could address it individually to the three members of the Public Utilities Commission as opposed to just a general high. And I think that I'd like to see it, and maybe I'll send some suggestions of my own. Not that I am, you know, a great writer or anything, but I did study Shakespeare when I was younger. And I would also say that one thing we should continue to mention is that the PUC is having a meeting here in Sioux Falls in a few days. Rick?
Yes, there's going to be a PUC meeting on March 23rd, and it's going to be at 5:30 at Ram Cota in the Washington Room. And that'd be a great place to make comments about our concerns with the CO2 pipeline, particularly, specifically for Summit.
Be there or be square.
A letter, if it's signed by you as chair or all of us as individuals, I don't know if it matters a whole lot. It would be commission action, basically. But again, I think we do need to send a strongly worded letter about our support for our citizens and making sure that every protocol is followed, and that there are strict language about what it, if it is to be, what it has to have in it to protect the people. You know, we talked about, I'm going to just address McPherson County, McPherson, correct?
Yeah, McPherson.
You know, the county doesn't have any, as far as I'm aware, and I'm shooting from the hip here a little bit, but when it comes to the legal hierarchy, that just because they don't allow it doesn't mean that what they passed is going to fly before the PUC. So it comes down to a kind of a legal game of who gets control over what. So we could pass something like that, but it's just words on paper. It doesn't carry a whole lot of weight. So I think stronger language in a letter, addressing those concerns, would be the appropriate thing to do.
Okay. Commissioner Bennigan?
I agree with Dean. I think that we already have pointed out all the things that you guys have brought to us, which is evident that we all agree with. And I think we use our legal department to write that letter, to make sure that they understand where we're coming from, and make it as strong as possible, but still, obviously, professional. But more importantly, I think it's also good for us to try to get as many people as possible to that PUC conversation so that they know that we're paying attention.
Legal, I'm going to ask you a question, and I won't put you on the spot, I promise. What is our deadline for having this letter to the PUC, if you know? And my second question is, if we approve, it says consideration, but if we, are we, do we need to approve it today, or do we bring it back to next week's Commission meeting for an actual approval of a letter? So I just need to know a little direction.
Madam Chair, Eric Boggs, that's Attorney's Office, for the record. I think the response that you're looking for is, do we have time to next meeting to reformulate a response? Certainly, we have plenty of time to next meeting. You could certainly allow for a continuation of today's agenda item till next meeting for a redraft of the letter. Certainly take responsibility for that draft. We tried to keep it relatively general in the understanding that the Commission was a little reluctant to take the party status in the affair, so we kept the letter more general. But we can certainly make it far more legal if you wish, and happy to do, and then we can bring that forward between now and next meeting, have that ready for your next meeting's consideration, so.
Okay. Commission?
So would we just, so do we need a motion to postpone this or to defer this to next week's final?
I think a motion to defer to next meeting would be appropriate.
Would be appropriate.
Okay. So I would look for a motion to defer to next week's meeting, next week. Next week, we meet. Okay. Next week's meeting to continue the conversation on the draft of the letter.
I would make that motion with a question after a second.
I'll second that.
So this letter, will it be available for us all to review by, say, Friday?
Yes.
Yeah, it will have to be, because it's going to be on the agenda, so we'll have to be able to tweak it between now and Friday.
Okay. And the public would be able to see it? It would be available for the public to see?
Right. It'll be on our published agenda by Friday, late day, five o'clock. I think it has to be published by five o'clock. So that would be our draft letter, if we have any other.
And then we take additional comment next Tuesday on the letter?
Yep.
That would be fine.
Okay. All right. Rick had one more comment he wanted to make. And I have to, we've got a motion in a second, but I don't have a vote, so.
Yeah, the only thing I was going to say is, we have until April 8th to give comments to the PUC.
Okay, thank you. Okay. I have a motion in a second to defer this to next week to continue the conversation on the draft of the letter. All those, do we need a roll call vote?
No.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign. Motion passed unanimously. Did you have an additional comment, Commissioner Kersky, or did we get that? We got that.
Thank you.
Okay. With that, we are going to move on to our next one, which is item number 12, which is "Consider a motion to approve an application for medical cannabis dispensary license."
Madam Chair? Give everybody an opportunity, if they don't want to stick around for the rest of our fun agenda, they can leave, so.
Give you a minute to move out of the room before we move on. Thank you for coming.
I used to pick rocks as a kid.
So did I.
So did I.
Didn't we all?
He tassled corn, too. How about?
He tassled corn too, how about that?
I didn't do that, but my kids sure did.
Did you walk beans?
You start, evolved into a rock fight.
Well, I tried it once, and that was enough.
Shelled corn, threw bales.
Baled hay.
I did that.
In a machine ship, walked uphill both directions.
Yes, exactly.
Rode a bean buggy.
No shoes. No shoes. Okay. Mr. Kite, you know how to clear a room.
Oh, I set up for that one. Morning Commissioners, Ben Kite, Auditor's Office. I'm here today to ask you to consider the approval of medical cannabis dispensary applications. As you recall, back in December, we opened the process for businesses to apply to Minnehaw County for a medical cannabis dispensary license. We received four applications, the Auditor's Office, we reviewed each of those, and determined that they all met the requirements of the ordinance, with the exception of the location that they had chosen. So we held a public random selection process where we determined how we would consider which of those applications would be, should be submitted to the commission, and the, that random selection process of the four, so we had Genesis Farms was the number, the first one, GFV Specialty Retail LLC was number three, and then Shangri-La had two applications for later three and four. So as I mentioned, the prospective license, each required a conditional use permit, and those conditional use permits were submitted to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and they were considered on February 28th. Each of the, there were three conditional use permits submitted, each of them was approved. There was a five-day appeal period for all those CUPs. The appeal period passed, nobody appealed those, so each of the CUPs for those, for those individuals were approved. So we've reviewed them, it's gone through the conditional use permit, you know, it's kind of our opinion that all of the requirements have been met, and then we would just ask you to consider the approval of each of those, sort of, you know, we have one license for the county, so of the, you know, the three that are basically remaining, we'd ask you to consider, you know, each of those, you know, if, if the first one is approved, well then by default, there's no need to consider the rest of them. We do have representatives from each of those applications here today, if you had any questions for them, or if you have any questions for me.
Okay. Any questions for Otter Kite? Any questions on the process? We are approving one, and I think that the plan was that you approved the first one.
That's correct.
Any questions?
Not yet.
I need a motion.
Move approval, second.
I need to prove, do I need, do we need to state in that motion who we're approving? We do. So you have to state who you're approving, which is the first one, which is Genesis Farm LLC, correct?
That's my motion.
Okay. I have a motion to approve it, in a second.
I believe this is a public hearing, so she-
Oh. It is not. It says consider motion, but we should have a public hearing. Okay. We're going to make it a public hearing.
Okay.
So is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of, do I, of the-
Number one would be fine.
The number one person.
Good morning, Emmett Reisstrafer from Sioux Falls. I'm the Chief Operating Officer for Genesis Farms. I'll keep it pretty quick today. I think I spoke for probably 15 minutes or longer at the Planning Commission meeting, so really dove into the details there about how we operate the business, how we're working with neighbors to make sure it's a compatible location. Pleased to report that we've received several state licenses already at other locations, so I'm confident after receiving approval from the county that I'll also obtain a state license here. And we also, just yesterday, received licenses for our wholesale, wholesale facility in Box Elder, where we will do the cultivation and manufacturing. So I'm just looking forward to doing business in Minnehaw County. This is my hometown, it's probably 10 years ago when I started this process, just right out on the sidewalk, outside this building, doing petitions for medical cannabis. So it's been a long time for my family and I to wait for this, and I left, got a lot of experience in the industry, and now hope to do a good job here and to be a good role model. So everything from odor control to inventory control to security is all addressed in our business plan. If there's any questions about any of our policies or procedures, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else that wants to speak in support of this decision? Did you want to speak in support?
Neutral comment.
Okay, a neutral comment, go right ahead.
My name is TJ Cameron, and I'm here representing the Shangri-La Group, which won't probably have an opportunity today. We do support the location physically that Genesis Farms is at, because it's also in a very neighboring area to our own application. The one comment that I'd like to make to the commission is that there is a rule in the current ordinance that there's 1,000 feet from another dispensary. Should you approve this particular location, it would limit our ability, should other licenses become available under the current wording of the commission, and that is a concern for us, that we may not have the ability, should additional licenses open up, to be able to apply at our location, which is within 1,000 feet of, of this one that we're looking to approve today. Secondly, I did want to just mention that in our, our location, which we also have an application jointly with some members of Genesis Farms Ownership Group, our current use is a non-conforming use to something that later may not be ideal to annex into the city limits of Sioux Falls. We have a fireworks facility. So we do feel that our location does have some advantages as to not potentially put two properties outside of, you know, when the city comes to annex, that may want to remain into the county, that you'd have one plat instead of two, that would, you know, be a blip outside of the city limits, if you will. But otherwise, definitely support the location.
And I would say probably it's a PUC.
CUP.
CUP, there you go.
We don't have a pipeline here.
There we go, it would probably be a CUP, so.
I picked, I picked a lot of rock too.
Conditional use permit, for those who do not know, that would be a conditional use permit, so it would go to planning. Is there anyone else that isn't support or neutral? Then I would look for opposition comments. Okay, seeing none?
Madam Chair, I have a question for Emmett Reisstrafer.
Okay.
Emmett, having sat through the Planning Commission and actually being a supporter of having dispensaries, can you tell me why the ownership seems so mono-ownership, you know, both organizations seems to be the same people, out of the same deck of cards or whatever?
Well, I'll say there's a lot of interest in this industry, but the folks that can actually get across the finish line, it's quite a process, and so, you know, you'll see it kind of start to shrink and shrink. You know, if you go to the state's website, I think it's sdmedicalcannabis.gov, they listen, they list the license holders. Also, there's limited locations, so you'll kind of see, you know, the, the certain property owners who had some good spots, a lot of the industry folks like me had conversations with them and formed partnerships. I think that's why you see some overlap, you know, we, I met TJ a long time ago, and, you know, he's got the same dream I do, and in this case, it was kind of the, the luck of the draw of the bingo ball, I guess, but we wanted to form partnerships with other groups too, and that's kind of why, if that answers your question.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Good morning, Scott.
Scott Anderson, Planning Director. I just wanted to address the one comment about if we were to allow more medical marijuana or medical cannabis licenses, the, the commission could direct staff to amend our ordinance to reduce-
Setbacks.
Reduce setbacks, or eliminate them, whatever, so I'm just addressing the concern, the one concern that was brought up, that that's always an option for the county commission to further revise the zoning ordinance if we allow more, decide to allow more licenses.
And that could also be a conditional use, couldn't it?
Could be.
Yeah, okay. Thanks, Scott, for running down. Okay, is there, and there was no one opposed, we already have a motion and a second to approve Genesis Farms LLC, so I'd take a roll call vote.
Kerski.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Hiberger?
Aye, motion passes unanimously. All right, we're going to item number 13, which is a briefing of unaudited 2022 financial results and publication of the unaudited annual report. Good morning, Susan.
Good morning, Susan Beaman, Auditor's Office. Just wanted to brief you on our 2020 unaudited financial results. We, we have provided you three different reports in your packet today. The first one is the annual report for the county, which is required to be published per codified law. This will go into our, into our papers, will be published within, approximately next week by the end of the month. There's a lot of numbers on that page, but just wanted to be able to provide that to you if you had any questions on that, so that you can see our major funds, as well as the last column shows the consolidation of all those smaller funds that we have within our county.
I don't have any questions. Commissioner, do you have any questions? Appreciate you bringing it forward, and we get an opportunity to dig through it in your right, there's a lot of information in a couple of pages.
Yes, and then the, the second report is just the operating results for the county, and this will be a little bit more, maybe a little bit more informative. What we have done on the middle of the page is kind of break down the variances on, and this is just general fund specifically. It is our results between variance from actual to budget, so you'll see, like, in the top section, our revenue section, that there were a handful of items that make up the majority of our, our favorable to budget for our revenue. The three that I would point out on that list is our bank franchise tax apportionment, was approximately 1.2 million over what we had originally budgeted. That's a number that can change from year to year, it's not anything we control, it's based upon that, that value that comes from the state, that then we have to apportion out, and we get our, our percentage of that. And then the, the next item I'd point out is the register of deed fees that were approximately 1.3 million. You've heard repeatedly about the, the, the volume of sales and refinancing, and that's directly related to that as well.
Right.
And then on the expenditure section, what I would maybe point out is that there were a lot of variances to budget and a lot of, there were some unspent dollars, which will be part of the hearing on April 5th to consider carryover from 2021 to 2022 for some projects. Some of our departments incurred difficulties with ordering and supply chain and things like that, where we weren't able to fulfill those expenses prior to the end of the year for those reasons.
Okay, great.
So pause for any questions.
Commissioner Kerski.
And I think you just answered one of them. We had our Public Defender's Advisory Board meeting this morning with buying furniture and, you know, carrying it over and that type of thing was a question that was brought up.
Yes, that is on the list for you to consider for April 5th hearing.
Okay, perfect, thank you. And then the other one I have, the telecommunications tax was 253,000 short, is that?
Correct, that's under what we had budgeted, and there were, that was another number that we don't necessarily control, the dollars come from us, from the state, we've kind of reached out to them to explain it, it, it all comes down to that math that they get from their fees and things like that, just is passed to us.
That's what we use for funding our metro communications, if I-
Uh, no, this is a different one.
That's, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, that's where I was going, okay, okay.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Okay, this was just a briefing, so thank you, Susan.
This is just a briefing, so I wanted to make sure you guys had that, and, and like I said, we will publish that annual report in the papers by the end of the month.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Susan. Item number 14 is authorize the chairman to sign an amendment agreement for comprehensive institutional healthcare services with correctional medical management. Warden.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Warden Mike Mattson from Minnehaw County Jail. Pretty straightforward, this is an amendment to our current medical contract that includes the language that's associated with federal grant things.
Yep. Are there any questions for Warden Mattson?
Move for approval, second.
I have a motion and a second, roll call vote, please.
Benega?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye.
Hiberger?
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Item number 15 is consider a motion to authorize an adjustment to the, the contract services budgeted for CMM to hire an additional health, mental health counselor.
When we were reviewing the, the rules of the ARPA funding, one of the things that's pointed out in there is that there is room for additional mental health counselors, so we would like to take advantage of that and hire one more, so we have a fourth mental health counselor in the jail. We currently, we currently have three, they are very busy. Statistic-wise, about 38% of our population takes psychotropic medications, and our current three counselors did roughly 4,300 routine and urgent referrals last year. In addition to, in addition to that, they do several other tasks, responding to inmate messaging and stuff like that too, so the need is definitely there. As we continue to grow, we're going to see this more and more, but we have some available funding, so let's take advantage of it.
And those mental health professionals are not only important for the health and safety of our inmates, but also of our staff, to take care of our staff. Now, I'm not saying that they need the mental health, I'm saying that they need to protect them from injury. Commissioner Kerski.
So this is ARPA funding, so it'll basically be funded for, through 2026, through the ARPA funds, is that the plan?
If, if that's correct, I believe so. I didn't, I, there, there's some confusion on, does it extend through 2024 or 2026?
I think it has to be spent by 2026, no, 2024?
Budgeted.
Budgeted by 2024.
Budgeted by 20-
Through 2026.
Budgeted through 2026, thank you.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
So that basically funded?
Through 2027.
Okay.
Yes.
So we got a few years to-
Figure that out, and I'm sure we'll need it with the growth.
Absorb the position, so, okay.
Warden, do you keep track of the percentage of your population that actually goes into that mental health category? 38% seems like a lot, but-
We don't, we don't necessarily put a label on anybody. My Health Service Administrator pulled some data for me, and that's where I got my numbers.
Okay, thanks. If I could.
Commissioner Kerski.
Yeah, 38% or 35% are on psychotropic meds, but, I mean, when you talk about percentage of incarcerated population on a national basis, my understanding, those with mental health and/or addiction problems is probably closer to 75 or 80%?
I would agree.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, I could use a motion on that one.
I would move to approve the contract with CMM, second.
I have a motion and a second, roll call vote.
Benega?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye.
Hiberger?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, thank you.
You.
Item number 16 is authorize the state's attorney to sign a five-year agreement with Thomas Rutgers Westlaw for legal research software.
Good morning, Commissioners. Drew D. Grohl, Deputy State's Attorney from State's Attorney's Office, as the memo states, seeking authorization for the State's Attorney to sign new Thomson Reuters Westlaw research package, it would be with the Westlaw Edge. Right now, the State's Attorney's Office currently uses Westlaw Classic. Westlaw is starting to kind of phase out technology with regard to Westlaw Classic, and Westlaw Edge really gives an updated research capabilities for the State's Attorney's Office. As noted in the memo, the Attorney General's Office, UJS, City Attorney's Office, all these offices are, are moving to let Westlaw Edge due to the updated technology that's within that software program. The initial contract for the first year would be $2,268.10 with a 1% increase each year for a five-year contract. One thing that we stress to them is we didn't want any additional expenditures for this year, so they've allowed us for $850 credits to make sure that there's no additional expenditures for this year, so the contract for the, the new price wouldn't actually take place until the next year. You have any questions?
Because of budgets. Thank you, Drew. Questions for Drew? Commissioner?
Drew, in the past, I have asked the question about why the public defender and the public advocate, who also have contracts with Thomson Reuters, aren't merged together, but today I'm going to ask, if, if the Attorney General and the city of Sioux Falls have this contract, why can't we, we buy dump trucks from the state contract, can't we go together with them on this contract and save a penny?
Yeah, I don't think that's feasible, and we have looked in, at your direction, I looked into it to the pa, in the past, to join with PDO and OPA, and it's just something with their fire- to join with PDO and OPA, and it's just something with their firewall capabilities that's just something that we can't do to join.
There can't be a firewall between you and the Attorney General, can there?
Never know.
All right, you asked the question.
I knew you'd have a question because you asked it last time too, so.
Move approval.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Nice to see you, Drew.
Thank you.
Been seeing you for a while. Um, item number 17 is Human Resources Annual Presentation. Good morning, Carrie.
Good morning, Carrie Dever from Human Resources. Uh, this is the time of year when I usually present you with several charts and graphs about the county workforce. Um, I'm giving you the shortened version today and, uh, focusing on what seems to be most important for many employers right now. For us, um, the major issue in our office this year, of course, is the amount of turnover we've had. And so we're focusing on recruitment, and of course, even more than recruitment, trying to retain the current staff that we have. You can see by the statistics here, the turnover has increased pretty substantially. I've given you some information on what we've experienced over the last year, as well as, um, a point of comparison by just going five years back, so that you can see that the trend is pretty significant. So our goal is to continue those efforts and try and attract employees to county, and again, keep the current staff that we have. Beyond that, we're still dealing with COVID, of course, not surprising. Thankfully, the last couple of weeks have shown a marked improvement. Our other focuses really are on efficiencies. With staff demands right now, we're trying to make the most efficient use of what those resources that we do have. Uh, we've made, um, great strides in making the new employee process more electronic. So we have, um, completely automated that. Employees receive their paperwork ahead of time, can complete it online, so that when they come, we can focus on policies and procedures and other training that we need to look at. We're looking at doing that on the exit turnover side to see if we can get some efficiencies there too. Other major projects for the year is to do a voluntary benefits review, so we hope to start that probably within the next few weeks. And not surprisingly, the last thing I've included there is, given the amount, um, turnover that we've had and stresses on our office, we had planned to add a position in 2023. I will likely be coming before you sometime yet, here probably pretty soon, and ask for consideration to, um, move that up a little bit earlier to this year. Any questions?
Questions for Carrie? Commissioner, Benega.
Carrie, do you keep track of who works from home? I know we have a lot of positions that can't do that, obviously. But do we keep track of that potential?
I don't personally track that. Um, during COVID, Auntie's office, because they have to remote in, had a good sense for how many people we had remoting in, and we were just in a meeting yesterday, and I think we said that we had at times, um, you know, 90 staff, up to 90 staff potentially remoting in. We've transitioned almost all of our staff back on site. You know, as you pointed out, you know, certain services just have to be done on site. A lot of the people who could have worked from home were, like, attorney staff, and, um, you know, sometimes it's just more convenient to be located here close to the courthouse.
Commissioner, any more comments? I would say Carrie's office is small and mighty. Because there are not a lot of people in that office, but they keep this county running. And I could say that probably about a lot of offices, but you can't do it without HR, and she does a lot of work behind the scenes that nobody else sees, and we appreciate you very much. And I can't believe you had a short report.
Well, it could be a lot longer. If you want the longer, just let me know, but thank you for your comments, I appreciate that.
All right, thank you, Carrie.
All right, thanks.
Um, item number fif- uh, 18, excuse me, is authorize the chairman to sign professional services agreement between Minnehaw County and Civil Design Incorporated for Final Design Projects MC 22-06 Structure 50-101-080 Bridge Replacement.
Uh, good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Jacob.
Um, the item I have you, for you, before you today is for the replacement of a 73-foot pre-stressed girder bridge. Um, this is just west of the Tri Valley School. This is currently one of two structures posted on our county highway system. The other one's just posted for, um, special emergency vehicles. We want to get these bridges off our system as soon as we can. This particular one is adjacent to the Colton Road, the North South Road, that we bid earlier this year. Because that project didn't go, we wanted to move this one forward so we could get this bridge replaced before we do any kind of construction on County Highway 149. Um, in their analysis, CDI did what we call a TSNL, a Type, Size and Location Study, which would, is their preliminary engineering. Um, they determined that a 73-foot pre-stressed girder would be the best option in this location, so we're asking, uh, for you to sign the agreement with them.
Questions for Jacob? Jacob, do you know how old that bridge is? Because I think I remember when they changed it the last time.
That bridge is from 1987.
I do remember.
So this is, this is kind of an unusual, the design life for our structures is about 75 years. Um, this is a pre-stressed girder bridge, which have been failing early. That's a very common issue around our county, is with the, the double Ts to, to fail early. Um, and the issue is because of the salt gets down into the steel, erodes the steel, and the concrete falls apart as well.
Okay, we won't do that again. All right, I need a motion.
Motion to approve, but I have a question too.
Second.
Motion and second with Commissioner Barth's question.
Jacob, will, uh, this be complete by next school year?
It will not be. I, I do not expect it to be complete by the, by the beginning of school this fall. Our intention is to get it done before the snow flies, to keep as many school buses off the gravel roads as we can.
Thank you.
Yep.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number 19 is authorize the chairman to sign professional services agreement between Minnehaw County and UTEC Engineers Incorporated for the final design and of Project MC 22-07 Structure 50-337-103 Bridge Replacement.
So this is a posted structure on a township road on the very east side of the county. Um, we received two, uh, proposals from consultants, and Alteg, Alteg had the best proposal as far as timeliness and cost.
Questions?
Built in 1935, we got our monies out of, money out of this one, didn't we?
We did, yep, that's what we like to see.
Motion?
Move approval.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. One more for you, Jacob. Um, item number 20, consider bid results and award recommendations for MC 20-08 Guardrail Rehabilitation and authorize the chairman to sign an agreement with Asphalt Surface Company. The bids were opened on March 9th.
I do have a correction on this one.
Okay.
Um, in the second to last paragraph, it's right, but it's not Asphalt Surfacing Company. It is BX Civil and Construction Incorporated. Um, they were the only bidder on this contract. Um, we had budgeted in our 2022 budget, um, $475,000 for this project. It came in at $479,000. Um, it would have been nice to have another bidder on this project, but, um, we're happy to be able to get the, get the work done. Um, what we're doing is we're retrofitting three structures with, with new guardrail, um, and then doing some grading improvements as well.
Okay, so my motion will need to be for BX Civil and Construction Incorporated. Commissioner Barth?
I'll make a motion, but I have a question.
Okay, I have a motion and second. Commissioner Barth?
Was this, uh, contract written in a way that, uh, others could have bid on it? Or did we specify the guardrail to be only one made in Brazil or something?
No, no, the guardrail is very, very commonly used around here. Um, we use it on the bridges that we install today. So there's, there's multiple contractors in the area. Um, another, another entity that we work with on a regular basis is Guardrail Enterprises out of Hartford. They had, they had called in and asked questions that week, was kind of expecting them to bid on it as well, but they must have been busy.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, correct? I'll, uh, roll call vote.
Barth.
Aye.
Kerski.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Heiburger.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. And I misspoke. Item number 21, authorize the chairman to sign Amendment Number Three for Design Agreement MC 17-10 for Highway 149 Reconstruction.
So this is the Colton Road that I spoke about earlier, adjacent to that bridge we are replacing. Um, earlier in the year, we had bid this project, I believe it was in December, actually, and the prices came in higher than we were expecting. Um, so our approach now is to reduce the scope of the project. Instead of doing a, a full rebuild on that road, um, what we're having the consultant do is design the road where we just grade the bad vertical site issues, the bad hills. Um, and then we're still going to widen the roadway, the shoulder on either side, and then flatten the in-slopes to make it safer.
So we just base, I, I did want to ask questions about it, so we're basically going to leave the road as much as possible, but level it out a little, so some places will be tore up, is that correct? And then we will widen it with just shoulders. I'm thinking bike people, they're looking forward to having a bike path.
Sure.
Even though it's not a bike path.
It won't be a bike path. We don't have any of those on our county system. Um, but the, the plan is, yeah, to reduce the overall amount, overall amount of grading. Um, year one, we would go in, do the grading work, um, cut down a couple of the bad hills that we have, widen the in-slopes, and then replace all the culverts along the project. And then in year two, we would either do a cold-in-place recycle or a stabilized full-depth replacement, where we would grind up the existing surface, lay it back down, and then put a new asphalt mat on top of it.
Okay, so it's still a two-year process, and it's still going to be a mess?
Still going to be a mess.
Any additional questions for, okay, I need a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call vote.
Barth.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Kerski.
Aye.
Heiburger.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. And item number 22 is a briefing on the 2022 legislative session, which is now almost done.
By the Class Commission Office, that's correct, it is mostly done. We're currently waiting for the veto day, which is March 28th. Otherwise presented for you is the final action, um, of the legislation that we were tracking throughout the session. Uh, I would note, obviously, that delivered to governor does not equal signed to governor, but that was what it was at the last time I saw it. A couple other things I want to point out. Senate Bill 198, which was related to juvenile justice, we were watching very closely. Ultimately went to a conference committee, and the House approved the conference committee report, and the Senate did not approve the conference committee reports. That bill died at that point. Um, other than that, the other things I'm planning to be watching for are any interim committees for this upcoming summer session. Um, I would, I have a few, a few hunches as to what to expect, but I think there might be a busy summer in that respect. Otherwise, I would appreciate if you have any questions or advice or comments on how this information has been presented to you throughout the session. I'd love to have some feedback as to make this the best report, most useful for you, as it can be. Otherwise, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them.
Okay, are there questions? I think I've been happy with the way you've reported out, Tyler. I mean, obviously, it's, it's a learning process, as we all learn. Um, and we've been, you know, trying to keep on top of stuff that was important to the commission, and that's where you're their point person to find those, and then sometimes we find other things that we think we should follow. But, um, I mean, I was, I was happy with the level of, of, because you can't watch everything. We have to watch the things that are effective to us, so.
Thank you.
Comments?
Madam Chair, I'll ask you and Tyler. Uh, so with the defeat of Senate Bill 198, did you get the sense that it was going to come back next year?
I, I assume that it probably will. Um, we were already proactively working on this before that bill was even dropped, as in the Juvenile Detention Partners Committee, and we are working on some stuff behind, not behind the scenes, but with our partners collaboratively in the county to figure out how we can, um, pull together data, make decisions that would be good for, for students and kids involved in the justice system. Our concern with, um, with opposing Senate Bill 198 is that there was no data to support the repeal of all of Senate Bill 73. There was no data. It was all anecdotal and all, um, concerns, which they're valid concerns, but we need to have the data to support what we, decisions we make going forward. And that's really what we're going to look at now, and we'll work with our partners to figure that out. It obviously isn't a Minnehaw only county concern, it's across the state. And so I sit on the State Juvenile Detention Alternative Initiative Oversight Board or whatever, and, um, we will also be trying to work with our partners to see, you know, where do we need to work with legislators? Where do we need to work with school districts with concerns that they have, so.
And if I could add one thing, the main sponsor of the legislation this session is actually retiring from the Senate, so that means nobody else can take up the cause.
Right.
If I, me and Madam Chair, seems to me from, um, my observation of what happened was there, the concern is too many disruptive kids in school. And then they looked at the data that, well, we're jailing less kids, significantly less people in the juvenile detention center. So obviously, we have to put more kids in jail. I, I mean, it's just counterintuitive from my perspective of the way the data was interpreted. So I think it, yeah, I think we have an education of the people that, you know, are going to look at this stuff.
And that's hopefully what we will work on. Um, we would have, we were in favor of a summer study because I think a lot of those information would have come out in a summer study, and it would have been an easier way maybe to educate legislators and other people, and to work through some of the issues we have. But, um, I think we have a work cut out for us without any funding from the legislative appropriations to help us with the summer study. So we'll figure it out. Okay, thanks, Tyler. Uh, is there any liaison reports?
We had a Public Defenders Advisory Board meeting this morning, Commissioner Heiburger and myself. I'm, um, comfortable in reporting that I believe that the administration of our Public Defender's Office is going well. Um, they are in the middle of some construction over there, and, um, budgetarily, they're doing fine. Um, just kind of, uh, it appears all is well, report.
Yeah, that was good. Good meeting. People excited about their job, which we always like that. All right, are there any non-action commission discussions? Commissioner Barth?
I just want to go back to liaisons. Dean and I also were on the UDC, uh, meeting this last week, and I tell you these, I've been doing this for many, 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 I think 16 years. And, uh, I don't sleep through all the meetings anymore. There's some action going on in them that gets stuff done. And we, uh, approved a letter to Transportation Secretary Buttigieg, uh, on some of our projects. Dean and I earlier had been in touch with Dusty Johnson's staff on the Maple Park Street project, and really, I think the staff that we talked to were kind of young, and they said, "Thanks," and that's it. But it seems like the UDC is making some progress on that. And there's also some, uh, federal, uh, highway money that's going to, uh, bring, uh, electrical charging stations every 50 miles along the interstate. So people in Chicago that have Teslas can come to, uh, the Black Hills or whatever. And I think that's really a progressive idea, and I think our state's tourist people should be really supportive of that. I know I am, but, uh, Dean is a big part of that this last week, and, uh, again, we, I feel like we're doing stuff at UDC.
Any other liaison reports? Okay, then I would go to non-action commission discussion. Okay, with that, I would ask for a motion to recess for executive session, and we would start at, on about 10 minutes.
Recession.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to recess. All those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you for all your hard work.
Carol?
What's this?